Now, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Great, great. Wow, so is everyone ready to get this party started?
Yes, sir.
Well, I apologize for being the subject of the technical difficulties. Um, my name is Michael Paylor and good evening, it's Wednesday, June twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, and the time is approximately six forty nine. Uh, I am the hearing officer designate at this hearing for the Montgomery County Department of Transportation, MCDOT for the Good Hope Road Shared Use Path Extension Project in Spencerville, Maryland. Here on this meeting call with me this evening to conduct a public hearing are Mr. Joseph Mogus, Chief of MCDOT's Division of Transportation Engineering or DTE, Mr. Robert Gonzalez, Chief of the Sidewalk Section in DTE, and Ms. Jean Kapuznik, Manager for Good Hope Road Shared Use Path Extension. Mr. Mogus will be providing the information and details regarding the proposed project. Thank you again for joining us on this virtual platform. Tonight's hearing is broadcasted via Zoom and is being recorded. A link to the recording will be posted within twenty four hours after tonight's hearing on the project webpage of Good Hope Road Shared Use Path Extension. The link to the project webpage is provided by scanning the QR code at the top of the chat. Please note, your video camera is turned off by default this evening. This is to reduce the bandwidth of the meeting and maximize technical efficiency. We do request that you do not turn on your camera during the hearing. Likewise, your microphones have been muted. Once the testimony portion of the hearing begins, those who wish to testify may raise their hand, and you will be called on and unmuted when it's your turn to speak. If you are joining us via telephone only, you may raise your hand by pressing star nine on your telephone keypad. Please wait until the testimony portion of this hearing to raise your hand. You may raise your hand at any time during the testimony portion of the hearing. We will call on you to provide your oral testimony when it is your turn to speak. Written testimony and comments may be submitted as well and will be considered with the same weight as oral testimony. Following the testimony portion of this hearing, we will hold a question and answer session if time allows. During that time, you may raise your hand to ask a question, or you're welcome to type your question in the chat box by clicking on the chat icon at the bottom of your screen. Tonight's hearing is being held pursuant to section forty nine fifty three of the Montgomery County Code, and the purpose of a public hearing is to obtain resident testimony regarding the potential project to assist in determining if the project is in the best interest of the public and whether it should be authorized for construction in its entirety or any portion thereof. This form allows you to provide testimony about the project, which may influence the final design. Your testimony should be focused entirely on the project, which is the topic of discussion. All interested persons are entitled to be heard at this hearing, however, the testimony portion of this hearing is not a form for dialogue, questions and answers, or cross-examination. Please direct your remarks to the specific project that is the subject of this hearing. If comments stray into areas not related to the project, I will ask you that you refocus your comments to the subject project. Following the the conclusion of this public hearing, the record will remain open for one month to allow any person who is unable to attend this hearing an opportunity to have their testimony included in the public record and be fully considered. Official, the official closing date by which all written testimony must be received is Friday, July twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, at six thirty PM. Submission should be provided via the online comment form on the project website, the link to which is shown on your screen, or by email to jean kapuznik at jean dot kapuznik at montgomerycountymd.gov by the close of the hearing record. Please be sure to provide your name and property address on your submission. Again, written submissions will be considered with the same weight as oral testimony. After the hearing is concluded and the record is officially closed, I, as the hearing officer, will review and weigh all the information submitted into the public record and make a recommendation to the Director of the Montgomery County Department of Transportation, Mr. Christopher Conklin, for his decision regarding the final detailed design of the project. And now, to discuss the Good Hope Road Shared Use Path Extension, I give you Mr. Joseph Mogus.
Good evening, Mr. Paylor, ladies and gentlemen. I am Joseph Mogus with Montgomery County Department of Transportation, Division of Transportation Engineering. The subject of this evening's public hearing is to consider a proposal to construct the Good Hope Road Shared Use Path Extension. For your convenience, we have posted a few displays that aid in the visual description of this project and can be downloaded from the project webpage. We will review them as I describe the project. Display A is a project vicinity map showing Good Hope Road in Spencerville. The dashed red line represents the project limits of the Good Hope Road Shared Use Path, recently constructed from Windmill Lane to Rainbow Drive. The s- solid red line shows the proposed shared use path extension considered this evening. The proposed extension is from Rainbow Drive to the entrance of Spencerville Local Park. The total length of the proposed project will be approximately nine hundred feet long. Display B shows the improvements in more detail. The large plan shown on the screen can be downloaded for review from the project website. At the bottom of the slide is the legend highlighting what the various colors and line styles are showing. The project provides a connection for pedestrians and bicycles to the Spencerville Local Park by extending their recently constructed Good Hope Road Shared Use Path. The proposed path matches the design of the original project and is an eight-foot wide asphalt path. It will terminate in the parking lot of the Spencerville Local Park. Display C depicts the existing and proposed typical cross-sections of Good Hope Road from Rainbow Drive to Spencerville Local Park. The proposed shared use path will be located on the east or northbound side of Good Hope Road. The first proposed section, the middle drawing, shows the path in the vicinity of the intersection of Rainbow Drive where there will be curb and gutter. The path will be directly adjacent to the curb and grading at three-to-one slopes will be used to tie to the existing ground. The second proposed section, the bottom drawing, shows the path as it will be constructed for the rest of the length, where there is no proposed curb and gutter. The path in eight, the path is eight feet wide for the entire length of the project with a minimum of a five-foot green space and an eight-foot trail proposed. Grading to complete the section and tie to the existing ground will include drainage swales that serve as water quality stormwater management. This project is located within the Upper Paint Branch Special Protection Area, and therefore, along with stormwater management requirements, is also required to comply with impervious area caps for the watershed. In order to offset the construction of this trail, six thousand seven hundred fifty square feet of existing impervious surface in the watershed has been identified and slated for removal. The total construction cost of this project is currently estimated at six hundred ten thousand dollars, including land acquisition, site improvement, utilities, and construction. The project is largely located on MNCPC Park property, and this project has been closely coordinated with MNCPC staff. Several exhibits are incorporated into the public record binder for your information and consideration. The exhibits include: One, Office of Management and Budget, BikeWay Program Minor Projects P five zero seven five nine six. Two, Design Plans at the Level of Seventy Percent Completion with the Latest Revisions. Three, Written Testimony Provided Prior to and After This Public Hearing to be Added Following This Hearing. Four, Washington Times Newspaper Ad on June fifth and eighteenth, twenty twenty five, Online Advertisement Proof, and Montgomery County Government Press Release Circulated June eleventh, seventeenth, and twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, and Posted to Various Social Media Sites. Five, List of Attendees to be Added Following This Hearing. And six, Hearing Transcript Also to be Added Following the Hearing. Project-related Data and Files Can Be Downloaded from the Project Webpage as shown on your screen. The files will continue to be available to the public until the record for this public hearing is officially closed. As previously stated, here with us this evening are Mr. Robert Gonzalez and Ms. Jean Kapuznik of MCDOT. In addition, we have Ms. Amanda Havener from the Engineering Consulting Firm, JMT, present at this hearing. We will be available after this hearing to answer any questions regarding the construction aspects of this project. And now, I will turn things back over to Mr. Paylor.
Thank you, Mr. Mogus. We will now hear testimony from those in attendance who wish to testify. Please reserve all questions for the Q and A session after the testimony portion of this hearing. We will begin with those who have pre-registered to testify. If you did not register to testify but change your mind at any time during this hearing, please raise your hand by clicking on the React icon at the bottom of your screen and then clicking Raise Hand. Attendees will be invited to speak in the order in which hands were raised. Once invited to speak, please unmute yourself by clicking on the microphone icon at the bottom left of your screen. If you join tonight's hearing by phone, you may dial star nine from your telephone keypad to raise your hand and star six to unmute yourself once invited to speak. Please clearly provide your name and address for the record prior to beginning your testimony. Lori Main, our host this evening, will announce the speakers.
Okay, we have two people signed up this evening to provide testimony. First, we'll hear from David Oliver.
Hello.
Hi, David.
All right, all right, I guess this is uh my, my time to speak. Um, so, hi, uh, hi, my name is David Oliver, uh, I'm a resident of Good Hope Estates off of Good Hope Road in Silver Spring, Maryland. Uh, here today to express my strong support for the proposed pedestrian pathway that will run in front of our home. Um, as a father of two young children, ages seven and nine, this project is personal and for me, essential to, to our family. Um, like many families in our neighborhood, I mean, we walk regularly, but we don't really have a safe path. We have to walk in the street. Um, we have to, you know, go somewhere to try to train our kids to ride their bikes. It's, anyway, so we're often forced into the street sharing space with passing cars. It presents kind of a safety risk daily, um, especially when the kids want to go to their friend's house, something as simple as that. Uh, so this dedicated pathway would dramatically improve the safety, accessibility, and work of, and walkability for the residents of Good Hope Estates. Um, obviously, we're included in that, and um, it would help build a more connected and active and engaged neighborhood. And I believe that aligns strongly with Montgomery County's values and goals. Uh, so, I am hopeful I urge you to move forward with this much-needed improvement, uh, not just for the sake of convenience, but to provide peace of mind and protect the well-being of the families who call this community home. Uh, thanks for your time and letting me talk.
Thank you so much, David.
Okay, next, uh, Celeste Lynn, although I do not see her in the lineup, it's Celeste Lynn here. Okay, uh, and that is all I have. Uh, if you'd like to raise your hand to provide testimony, you can click on the React icon and then click Raised Hand. All right, well, next here from Charles Halpin.
Hey, good evening. Um, my name's Charles Halpin. I'm the President of Good Hope Estates, and um, I live on Colesburg Street, which I'm a half a block off of Good Hope Road. Um, I've received a lot of feedback regarding the existing shared path, and a lot of it has been uh extremely positive. Um, so, uh, we want to encourage and, and, well, we give our approval for moving forward with this project as well. So I share a lot of the sentiments that, uh, uh, David did as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Charles. Do we have another?
Oh, Aaron Jacobs.
Yeah, sorry, this is actually Tom Jacobs, but uh, just wanted to say, um, I also support in addition to Chuck and uh David's testimony that there's another resident that lives on Foster Road that, uh, very excited about the, uh, shared use path extension and um, just kind of wish it was, uh, built twenty years ago when our kids were still little. But anyway, no, we're, we're, we're in whole, uh, wholehearted support.
Well, thank you for your offer, Tom. Any others? Here in Montgomery County, we are staunch believers in redundancy, so I'll ask several times before I finally close the window on the opportunity to speak. And again, if you change your mind and you want to submit comments in written form, uh, you're more than welcome to do that, and as we've stated, uh, the written comments carry the same weight as the, uh, oral comments do. So anyone else, Lori?
I do not have anyone else.
Now wait just a moment, and then I'll ask again, and then we'll, we'll close the, um, the opportunity to speak. One more time, is there anyone on the call that wishes to, um, speak tonight, give oral testimony? All right. And that concludes the speakers who have expressed an interest in speaking tonight, and again, there have been those who have, did not sign up to testify that have raised their hand. I'll ask one last time if there is anyone else who did not sign up to testify now wishes to speak, please raise your hand now or dial star nine on your telephone keypad if you wish to speak, and as I previously mentioned, uh, written testimony may be submitted as well and will be considered with the same weight as oral testimony. And without hearing any, uh, that anyone has, uh, elected to press star nine, we do appreciate everything, uh, regarding the testimony that's been provided and seeing that everyone who wishes to speak has done so and had an opportunity to do so, this concludes the oral testimony portion of the public hearing. Okay, at present, we will move into the question and answer session. Again, please raise your hand or press star nine on your telephone keypad if you wish to ask a question. Once you're invited to speak, please unmute yourself by clicking on the microphone icon at the bottom left of your screen or by pressing star six on your telephone keypad. You're also welcome to type your question or questions into the chat box. And of course, if we run out of time before answering all questions, your questions will be answered by email in the days to come.
All right, we have a question from Charles Halpin.
Hey, yeah, real quick, you were showing slides of the map. Can you go back to the one that shows, uh, Spencerville Park? How it's coming off of, the path's coming off of, uh, Rainbow? And up to the park? All right, so, if I'm, in looking at this, and in looking at the next, uh, slide you have as far as the path, the current, the way it looks on Good Hope now, for what's been installed, is that there's a, there's a, a gra- a grass median where there's mailboxes and stuff before you actually get to the shared path. Are you take, are you taking that into account to kind of make everything look in unison? On the next slide to how it's going to look here? Does that, does that make sense? Because you had it, and on the other slide, you had the three options, and you were talking about the second and the third. And I'm curious to know what's going to go into to make that final decision.
Well, good evening, Charles. This is Jean Kapuznik. I'm the project manager on the, on the project. Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Uh, I'm good. It's nice to hear from you tonight. Um, I would love to turn this over to Amanda because she has a tie back to the earlier project, if there is a need. Um, but the slide that we showed with three different, um, they're not really options, they're just the three ways that this is going to look within this reach. There's a portion that needs some curb, and so it'll look a certain way, and then when we have space, we'll have that green space, um, between. So I just wanted to clear that up, that it isn't, we're not picking, thank you. We're not picking any one of the other, there's the, the existing conditions look like that with no path at all. The park property, but the other two, there's a portion that needs a, a closed section is where a curb is installed. Um, and if it's open, uh, the water is allowed to go off the side of the road into grass, and so, uh, there's no curb. And so those two will both be being used in this section.
Ah, okay, so.
That makes sense. That might clear it up a little bit.
Yeah, so I'm kind of, so because the, most of the existing is on residential, in front of residential homes, I'm thinking for the two homes that this affects, it'll be the proposed, uh, open section, and then when you get to the park part, then it'll be the closed section, uh, I'm guessing.
Actually, I think in this case, it's actually the opposite.
Yeah, the opposite.
Yep, yeah, it, and, and, uh, so that open section will be able to, to look similar to it, that, what it does now at the park, there is a drop-off and a, a slope into the park. Uh, we're just widening that flat section to put the, the trail in and then have it go down a slope like it does now. Um, and there'll be a little bit of a, of some drainage in there. We've got a, a swell, it'll capture some of that water from some stormwater management. But that part will look, yeah, very much like it does now. I believe in front of the other houses, it's, we just want to tighten it up to the road a little bit, um, and, and make room for the trail without being too far out to the properties.
Yeah, because it, because then my question is, for the one resident that faces Good Hope, um, their mailbox is on the, is right next to the road, so if this path goes in,
Yeah.
they can't, their mailman won't be able, unless he drives on that shared path, which I don't think they want. That's what kind of initiated my conversation, my, my thinking with this. A lot of everyone else on Good Hope Road, especially for, uh, Good Hope Estates, they've got the bottom section, and their mailbox is in, their mailbox is in that green section.
Mm-hmm. Good, good tip. Thank you. We will take a look at that as we keep going.
I don't, I don't necessarily want to speak for the design, but if you look at display B, on the right side of the driveway, you can see a buffer between the proposed curb line and the shared use path where the mailbox could reside.
There you go.
Okay.
Perfect.
Is there gonna, is it possible also, um, because I know a lot of the folks, um, as, as Tom also said, we've got a lot of new walkways that were put in up and down. Would, could there a walk, could a walkway be put in from Foster over to the park, over to the, over to the, the path there on the, uh, I guess on the south side of the Foster Road going over to the, the new, uh, the new share path?
Amanda, maybe you want to address that, um, the, the, I know we've talked about this internally. I don't know how much was done, uh, before I was on this project about the site distance there and putting in a formal crossing. Um.
Kind of like what you have there at Rainbow.
Yeah, at, yeah. Amanda, do you have more about that and how we got there? Or didn't get there? Ah, not hearing Amanda, unfortunately. It is, this is not a portion, a part of the project right now. I can tell you that, that we had not intended to install anything formal like that, um, across walk or anything else. Um, but we can take a look at it for sure if we haven't already. I'll check with Amanda and see what, what the history is on that section.
Awesome, if you could do that, and then my last, my last question here is, um, a huge, uh, a, a huge aspect of what's already been put in for the share path are the lights. Are there going to be lights like we currently have going up and down Colesburg? Are there going to be lights here on this extended path?
Yep, this part is lit as well.
Excellent, that's what I needed to know. So, if, if you could just get back to me regarding the, uh, having a, 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 a walkway across the street.
Definitely.
Over from Foster, I'd appreciate it.
Definitely, sure. Um, and the lighting here is something, there's, there's a backstory in that too, that, um, being near the park, uh, they don't, they might want lights for events that they have or uses that they have, but at night, they don't generally want, um, a lot of light onto park property for critters and everybody else that, you know, wants, needs darkness at night. Um, and so we take, we worked with them on the design of the lighting for that. Um.
Okay.
Yeah.
The, the, everyone's been very insanely thrilled with the way the road is lit up now, so I've kind of, it just looks really nice, and I, I, I would assume that not every, I, I would assume everyone would kind of like to see that uniform, uniformly kept all the way up to the, up to the park.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
All right.
Thank you for your feedback. Appreciate that very much.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, I do have a question in the chat from David Oliver. He'd like to know what is the timeline for the project?
Um, this is, is currently slated to have funding, uh, starting in FY twenty seven, which would be, uh, July of twenty twenty six for construction. Um, we still have some more design to do, and I get it ready for that, and that, but that's what is budgeted right now.
All right, next we'll hear from Tom Jacobs.
A good memory. Um, yeah, Tom, again, if you could go back to the, uh, typical sections?
Sure.
So, just one observation, so the existing conditions, that typical section where you're showing um, the edge of the pavement going down, sloping down towards the park, um, that, that slope there is pretty steep. I mean, I'd say it's at least six or seven to one, um, going down right from the edge of pavement, uh, down, I don't know, probably twenty feet or so into the park. Um, so, you know, to get it up to the side path there, which is the, uh, you know, the, uh, the, uh, closed section, not, not the closed section, I'm sorry, the open section, the proposed section there with the five-foot buffer, um, that's a heck of a lot of fill that's going to be brought in there, um, just an observation. Um, the other thing, you know, so you're, you're talking about making the edge of the road, um, at grade, so a five-foot buffer, then the path, then it looks like another slope and then sloping down into the, uh, park. Um, again, a lot of fill, the other, you know, the, the thought I had is, uh, we have issues with parking. Um, so people overflow parking, uh, along that, uh, um, excess parking from the actual parking lot at the Humphrey Center. You know, with this kind of typical section, I could see people trying to park in that little grass buffer and perhaps even on the path. Obviously, you know, we'd probably have to rely on, on, uh, um, Maryland National Capitol Park and police, or maybe this is Montgomery County jurisdiction to, uh, to police that, but my thought was, in that typical section, what if instead of having it right at grade, that little buffer zone, if that sloped down, uh, not sure if design standards would allow this, but if you had a little slope where it sloped at like, I don't know, three to one, maybe a little bit steeper, and then went to the path and then sloped back off, off of the path, um, the thought is that you'd still get your drainage, but it would probably discourage people from trying to park along there because there would be a slope right up along the edge of the, uh, of Good Hope Road there. If you're following anything I'm saying, hopefully you are.
I must admit, I'm not entirely sure I'm visualizing exactly what you might have been describing, so that's, that's on me, and I apologize.
Yeah, if you're not, if you're not from the, uh, if you haven't been around, um, you know, if you haven't been around here, you probably don't have a full appreciation for, um, the existing condition, because like I said, it, it doesn't look anything like in that typical section there.
No, I, that, well, that was my next point, is that this is, this is a representation, you know, um, this is not exactly to see.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And, and there's a lot of varies, uh, areas in here. Um, no, I agree with you, it is steeper than it looks on here, and I have absolutely been out there. I've walked up and down that hill.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, no, I definitely know. Um, you're, you're, so I, what I'm not quite visualizing is, is how you were suggesting to maybe play with the, uh, the, the elevations of everything a little bit. Um, I will tell you that it, that it, it was, it's hard to get all of this to work at all.
Yeah.
And really drain correctly and not be on to park property any more than we need to be. They
Yeah.
absolutely want us to minimize what we're doing. Um, we're, we're trying to address a few drainage issues they have at the time in that area, but, but at the same time, but, um, really trying to minimize that. What I don't want to do is, and I, I don't know if you're, you're suggesting this at all, but what I don't want to do is have a trail that is at all dangerous to bicyclists when you start changing slopes or changing grades and, and you don't want some- and you don't want someone that it's up or down, you know, on either side of that trail too sharply. Right now, this gives everybody a chance to run off a little if they have to and move over a little if they have to, and and we have standards for that that I think we're meeting here.
Okay, I'm following. I get you.
Does that make sense? So, yeah, yeah. But yeah, thank you, though. These are great because it gets us thinking and taking another look at what we've got, so.
Yeah, like I said, obviously, it would be enforcement's issue to deal with any potential parking in the grass or on the path. That's all I was thinking about, but I get your point about the safety of the bicyclists for sure. And plus the runoff road, God forbid, you know, a car runs off the road there, you want to have it traversable, so I get it.
Does my microphone work now?
There you are. There you go. We've got our expert here to fix everything I just said.
Technical difficulties. I'm over here like screaming into the void going like, I know the answer. So to your point about the slope in the buffer, we are proposing like a six-to-one slope off of the edge of the roadway in that five-foot grass area between the roadway and the path, so the path will sit just ever so slightly lower than the edge of the road. So as Jean said, these are really just illustrative typical sections here. They're not showing all of the different slopes that we really have going on to work with that existing slope out there as much as possible to minimize the amount of additional earthwork that we're doing and also to keep our limits of disturbance onto park property as minimized as possible.
I was going to say you could definitely save some fill by not trying to match the grade of the road, but yeah, okay, that's cool. That's what I was thinking. I got it. Thank you.
All right.
So back to Charles' question about the potential crosswalk at Foster Road. Amanda had written that it was considered, but that it was ultimately dropped from consideration given concerns about safety of an uncontrolled mid-block crossing since there would not be a stop sign on Good Hope Road at this location like there's one on Rainbow Drive. Charles then asked if it could be reconsidered because there is a crosswalk on Good Hope Road to Hope Field Road with no stop sign on Good Hope Road at that intersection. And so Amanda, can you also speak to that? Would that be something we could reconsider?
I think we would have to go back and re-coordinate that with our cohorts at Park and Planning in the Parks Department as well as the Traffic Division with MCDOT as they were kind of vocal in that discussion, but I think we could probably discuss it again, but again, that would be more of Jean's decision to make.
All right, that is the last question I have.
Wow, okay. Is there anyone else who would like to ask a question this evening? Again, if you would, please raise your hand or press star nine on your telephone keypad. Yeah, thank you. All right, the window's closing. I'll ask one more time if anyone has any questions, any additional questions associated with the project? Maybe not a question, but a comment? Okay, no questions? All right. The time is now seven twenty-three PM, and we will conclude this hearing. Please note that you can also email your questions to the project manager, Mr. Huang Wen, after the hearing. Is that correct? All right. Seeing that all questions have been answered, we will now conclude this hearing. As a reminder, additional written testimony may be submitted via email or on the online written testimony form on the project webpage, a link to which is shown on your screen and must be received by the close of this hearing record one month from today, July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, by six thirty PM. Submission sent by email should be sent to jean.kapuznick@jean.kapuznick@montgomerycountymd.gov. Thank you so very much again for joining us this evening, and thank you so much for being patient as we worked out some of our technical issues at the start of the hearing. We do appreciate your participation. We thank you for your testimony and your questions, and the public hearing is now concluded. I hope you have a great evening.